All right, it's seven o'clock and it's May 9th, 2023. I'm the school committee chair, Elizabeth Spinney, and I call this meeting to order. First up on the agenda, we have public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, move on to general business. First up on the agenda is the school update for Grafton High School. Mr. Carney.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well.
And if you will, just for our records and our minute keeping, if you'll at all introduce yourselves before you get started, thank you.
Yes, we will. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Carney. I'm the proud principal at Grafton High School, and I'm flanked by our two assistant principals at Grafton High School, a first timer for school committee tonight. Why don't you go?
So hello, it's great to be here this evening. I'm Deborah Goodwill. My first year as assistant principal here at Grafton High School. I've had a wonderful year so far, all sorts of learning and getting to know people, and I'm thrilled to be here.
And I'm Jason Cody, assistant principal as well. Happy to be here tonight.
So we are here to discuss a few things with the school committee tonight. First, the Grafton High School update. What are the things that we've been working on over the course of the year? What do we think has been working well? What has led to thoughts on improvement efforts for next year in terms of opportunities and needs for our students and staff? And we also have some revisions for the school, the parent and student handbook for next year. But we'll start tonight, this evening, with just a general update of what we did differently this year from years past. If you recall, those of you who've been board members for a few years, coming out of the COVID years, we really front-loaded some efforts on some structural adjustments for our students as well as different course offerings. Things we probably thought about for quite some time, but we really wanted to leverage that opportunity because the times were calling for change anyway. Tonight, we'll talk a little bit about just the performance of that and where we see us moving forward. But our overarching questions, whether it's 2022, 23, 24, 2030, I think leads us back to these two questions about what we're doing at Grafton High School and to prepare our students for college and career success. But not just terms of structures and programs, but what are we doing to address their personal needs, social emotional needs, that really prepares them well for post-secondary life? So these are two anchoring questions that we try to reflect on regularly. What we did differently this year, there was some time, for a couple of years, we didn't really have an opportunity to collaborate together as a staff and put our efforts into solid professional development and training for our teachers. The first thing was to really adhere to a singular professional development focus, and that was on universal design for learning, particularly multiple means of representation of information as we deliver it for students, really trying to find that balance between audio and visual presentation, but also allowing kids different tools and resources to gain access to our curriculum. Mrs. Kahlo was here last month. She really did a deep dive into what we did all year long in that, so we won't talk too much about it. But that was one front-focused issue that we made a priority this year. The other was shifting. Some people would think shifting from four quarters to two semesters is a minor, just a little tweak. It really was significant. I mean, we went from formal reporting periods of really every 22, 23 days, if you're including progress reports and then report cards. And what we found coming into a school year, if you recall, there's so many requirements when you're occupying a school building with 1,000 people in it as it relates to public safety, that we need to get through some of those fire drills and evacuation drills and luck early on. We miss some instructional time, especially at the front end of our school year. So those first 22, 23 days are really like 15, it feels like. And that adds a lot of pressure for our students and staff. So again, going back to one of those two anchoring questions, what are we doing to prepare our students well for colleges and careers? Most of those post-secondary institutions fall on a two-semester schedule. So what if we take out the quarters and give teachers and students 90 days' worth of time to practice skills, for teachers to assess what students are learning, allow students to recover if they perform well early on in the marking period, and just really balance things out to alleviate as much stress as we can? So we're going to give you some feedback from our students and staff in just a few minutes, but that was a major shift for us. The other was, and Mr. Cody's going to talk about this in a little bit, but increased job training, exposure, and experiences for students who do not attend four-year institutions. Now, between 80 and 85% of our kids go on to higher education in two or four-year schools, but we have about 15% of our students who look to enter the workforce. I think we've always done a good job in preparing our kids for higher education. I think we can do a better job in preparing an educational structure while they're with us for advanced training for those who aspire to go into jobs and careers right after high school. And we've done a ton of work in this area in building partnerships and networks over the last couple of years to expose kids to different things that they didn't know were there. And we're really excited about the work that we're going to be bringing forth. And lastly, expanding our credit recovery opportunities for students, not just after school and over the summer, in the form of summer school, if you will, or extended time from individual teachers who provide more time to complete projects or make up tests. We really needed to do something more universal across the board and maximize the 12 months that we have in a calendar year, not just look at a 10-month school calendar. So we're doing a better job in using those intercessions, if you will, in the December breaks, the February breaks, April, as well as summer, for those kids who need more time to get caught up on their credits. I wasn't surprised by this data that, we just surveyed our teachers a couple of weeks ago. I could have done it in November, when everyone said, oh, this is great. I don't have to rush to submit projects or do makeup tests or grade these papers. I wanted to, we wanted to get a true sample of how people were feeling and get over that first semester. So roughly 63% of our teachers, you know, felt definitely this has helped alleviate stress for us. But 17% said, no, it hasn't alleviated at all. And 19% said, if you don't notice a change. Part of it, and you'll see this with the student responses, is saying, yeah, on paper it's great, but if you're a procrastinator like me and you just change the end time, it just means I'm waiting till the end, and now I don't have four grades to average together for my final yearly average. I only got two. It's good for them to experience that. And sometimes you have to, even though you may talk and warn upfront, until they actually experience the situations going through the marking period, do they realize that, okay, in the real world, in the real game, especially in college, when my parents don't have access to Power School or Schoology and can check weekly on what I'm submitting or not, like I'm all on my own, this is a good trial walkthrough for them to experience that I've got to manage my time better. So for the most part, the positive responses to this did help teachers more in spreading out major assessments over a marking period so that it wasn't bottlenecked into the last two weeks. We found that that's too common in many schools where teachers, I mean, students and parents are under the impression that their academic standing in this particular course is solid, B, B+, A-, but the weight of those assessments are smaller on the first half of a marking period versus the back end. So the heavier weighted stuff we are learning were really bottlenecked in the back. So you'd see kids with B+ or A- averages and then drop to a C in a matter of a week and a half. And we needed to do better there. And I think we have this year with spreading out those heavier weighted assessments that inform teachers of actual learning against the standards. And this was fairly similar as it relates to stress for students and teachers. And I already mentioned how students reported, and it was very similar. It was parallel. Teachers felt, didn't feel less stressed because they were still chasing students for work that was due, and then they were having to grade in the eleventh hour of a marking period. So it didn't really shift, but we learned a lot. We learned a lot this year, and we certainly have better plans and upfront communication at the end of this year as we think about the upcoming school year. As we shift into our thinking and plans for next year, and a lot of this is articulated in the school improvement plan that you have in your documents, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Goodwill.
Yeah, great. So as we look at that first bullet point, that's, you're going to find some action points and better detail on page five of the school improvement plan. There's a chart there. You'll see stick goal number one, which is to ensure consistency in equity in curriculum, instruction, and educational experiences. So one of the things we're looking at for next year is, obviously, we're going to continue doing the work with UDL that Tracy Kahlo explained to you folks last meeting. It's been some really good work, and people have dug into it, and our sessions afterwards when we review everything have been pretty productive. So we are going to continue working on that to expand it to including different modalities, how we're delivering information, being able to start, continue working to adapt to the learning needs of all students, and to be looking at assessments, you know, varying our assessments, and really looking to, when we're focusing on this, utilizing executive function, having kids understand metacognition, using that piece to be able to know how they learn and to act as a way that's most appropriate for them. So we're excited about that piece. And what's really exciting, too, about is it combines in with, if you see on the description of the activity on page five, it also includes having educators also gain a better understanding of social emotional learning elements. They're also known as the core competencies. And those five core competencies that are listed there, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, are all skills that impact not only their learning and engagement, but it also impacts their connectedness in the community, their understanding of self. And so they actually, UDL and SEL sort of dovetail. They have a pretty overarching section where they are intrinsically connected and really important for kids to learn, but also how to self-regulate, collaborate with others, and be, you know, critical people and citizens in their communities of choice as they go on. So that's one of the shifts. The next one is if we're looking at increasing opportunities for student and staff connections. And when we look at that one, you can see on page 10.
Of the actual school improvement.
Of the actual school improvement plan, you'll see that increased opportunities piece. We're looking to have, we looked a lot at the NEASC Student Opinion Survey. We looked at data. And so there's data, and then there's living life in the high school. And you can see that the data supports the living life in the high school. What you see as data when you're saying that 31% of students report that they trust other students even if they don't know them, 66% of students feel connected to other students. There's some numbers there that show us we do have some connection, but we've got a lot of room for growth to be able to start, you know, we're coming out of a disconnected world, and we're reconnecting. This was sort of the year of, ah, having it be awkward and strange and kind of bumpy. So what we wanted to do is have sort of an intentional focus on creating connections. There's a group of us that have been looking how we can do this. Our focus has been connectedness and relationships and building a sense of community in Grafton High School among all of us, all of the constituents of Grafton High School. And our hope is that if we go along with that piece about connection, we know that connection is energy that exists between people when they feel seen, they feel heard, and they feel valued. That's a quote by Brene Brown, but it's sort of what we're focusing that on, and people want to be seen, to be heard and valued. You're going to learn if that's happening. So that is one of the, and what's really exciting about Grafton High School, and I love seeing this as I come in from another district, we have the time built into our schedule. It's made to be able to do this. So we're looking at trying to employ, you know, maybe bi-monthly opportunities where students and staff are getting together. They're pulling together in sort of authentic, organic groupings of like similar interests, kind of like how G-term sets up, and just being able to converse about things that matter to kids and to all of us in today's world.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Of course. This is the time. I got more in than I thought I was going to.
And we have plenty of students like Maroska who can connect with anybody, right? But when we're seeing numbers roughly around 40% who struggle to do that, when we have over, I want to say 45, formal and informal clubs and sports, that's just not good enough. And maybe we can leverage those clubs and activities and those already natural connections that the adults and kids have together as that structure that's already built in the school day to convene and talk about things that really matter in the lives of adolescents and young adults. And I think that that's what our effort's going to be this year. But through that, we can also identify with who doesn't identify to any of those clubs or activities. If you remember anything about high school culture, those were, those clubs, the sports, the theater groups, the bands, those were part of your identity as a human being. It's what got you out of bed in the morning to come to school in the first place. We owe it to them to carve out more time together to talk about things that aren't necessarily with stakes involved, with grades and that sort of thing, with the demand to perform to it, but just connect as human beings. I was pretty sure with that cut in.
That was pretty, it was very good.
For me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you moved on.
Mr. Cody's going to talk about department head oversight this coming year.
Yep, so we want to, we want to look forward to department head oversight of credit recovery. Currently, the traditional plan for credit recovery, we wait till the summer, students opt into a summer school program of some kind. We recognize that not every student, for whatever reason, there's various reasons, may not be able to complete their full credits in the school day in the semesterized schedule that we have. So what we want to do is put our department leaders, who are most knowledgeable about our content being taught and what's going on in our classrooms, in an oversight position of the credit recovery program. That allows, as Mr. Carney said earlier, the possibility for students to make up credit during intercessions, identify students who might be struggling with completing credits, and identifying that and putting plans in place with our department leaders to allow the attainment of credit before students leave for the summer, right? Again, you're trying to utilize the entire 12 months, so summer's still part of that, but also those times when maybe we're not meeting during, you know, December, January, February, April, those times of the year as well. So we're structuring our schedule right now, where we're taking into mind, as we look at department head schedules and things of that nature, that they'll have that opportunity to be in that position to oversee the credit recovery program.
Ms. Goodwill's going to talk about the review of the health curriculum, but before she starts, what we're talking about reviewing and revising in this curriculum area, it's not just high school, we're going to be partnering with the middle school for this revised analysis, really, to making sure everything's up to date and current. Healthy living is by far our most important thing that we're going to be addressing, not only in the health curriculum, but how does this connect to our adult-student connected period during the extended block time of choices that we make as young adolescents, and how, if they're not healthy choices, how they stick with us for a lifetime? And we believe now more than ever it needs more attention and focus.
So it's probably not anything that's new to anybody. I will give a backdrop that I was a health wellness department leader and program coordinator for 27 years, so this is sort of my lifeblood. But I firmly believe in it, in the necessity to continue to keep our health curriculum updated and relevant to students. And it's about really making the content come alive as far as understanding the standards that are the national health standards, but also then taking the skills and being able to apply those skills in our lives. It's not that you do this, you do that, do, don't. It's about how do we learn this and make it personal? And there's a lot of work that can be done with that in any school district, but we know that unless kids are living healthy, and this means without judgment, by the way, everybody makes choices. So this is a non-judgmental approach. It's a, this is the information, how can we guide you to make the best decisions for you? But we're looking at, in a post-COVID era, the number of different concerns with students around social media, with lack of connectedness, with isolation, mental health issues, there are so many different things that we can cover. We also know that when students understand themselves, so for example, if a student understands the development of the adolescent brain and the prefrontal cortex and what the amygdala is doing in a fight or flight situation, when they know that piece, they can make better connections to the content. What are those drugs doing to my brain? What is social media doing to my brain? I can see now why I'm not getting followed, I'm getting anxious. And so that's what we want to look at. We want to look at what's impacting our kids, how do we support them, how do we guide them, again, without judgment? Because really, I said this all the time in my classes, health is life. So this is the stuff you can kind of grab onto, and, you know, I'd love to see some students get involved in how we're looking at the curriculum, what's working for you, what's not working, what do you need from us? So that's what that's about. And we hope to, it does connect with UDL, with SEL as a backdrop, and it's really important. Unless they're healthy, unless they can stay focused, unless they're able to concentrate, and they're not going to learn.
So just a specific example to this, when we're talking about what's missing in our health curriculum, are we talking about cell phone use? And really, what does that impact to our kids? I've had personal conversations with some of you, and just passing, because we're parents of teenagers, and what 2020 did when, when we grew up, going to our room was a punishment. Remember those days? Now, kids, you know, go to the room, that's their area of preference, and closing the door, and staying there, and they've got all of their electronics with them. Why come out? So when they couldn't get together physically, they kind of shifted. And tell me if I'm wrong, Maroska, but it went from kind of Snapchat, then Instagram, to group chats on their phones, and then the stresses that were impacting their life was, today I'm in the group, tomorrow I'm not, and why am I not in the group? And they don't, in the moment, have an understanding of why this is happening to me or why I'm doing this to other people, and I'm taking people out of these conversations. Again, we need to dedicate time, instructional time with kids to talk about these choices that they're making, and how to avoid that, how can we make better decisions around it?
And those types of things, or like gaming or whatever it is, gaming, social networking, it doesn't mean these are bad things, but they are creating neural pathways, that are creating habits for life, they're changing how kids think. And again, there's purpose to technology. We're not saying it's going to be gone, but it's, you've got to use it in form. You don't just drive a car, get in for the first time and drive. It's, so it's like just being able to understand that and be able to understand those connections for kids.
Ms. Cody, you have the last.
The next, the next bullet is on page seven. You'll see some information about that initiative on page seven. And I presented earlier to the committee about our school-to-career program, and we talked about a program of study. So it's, this is a piece that I'm very proud of what we've done so far at the high school, but very excited about what's left to be done. There's a lot that we still can do. So this year, we made some great connections, reconnections with Blackstone Valley Ed Hub and the foundation, and a variety of other partners, and we look to increase those. This year, we actually were recognized as an educational partner with the foundation. So that was, that was a pretty neat thing. So we were, that was great. And I went with some of the people who've been working in this program, Karen Mealy, Jed Cummings, and Sharon Buckley, and we went to that even. So, but one of the things that Mr. Carney talked about a little bit earlier is about 50 to 20% of our students go on to the workforce. And we want to make sure we're doing a good, as good a job at that, at preparing them to go into the workforce as we are to our students going into college. This year, we had a college and career fair. We had, we want to, we had local businesses that are looking to hire out of high school. We want to increase that. We had speakers come from local businesses, talk about, run workshops with our students about professionalism and things of that nature for those students. We want to increase those as well. One of the other things that we want to do is, you know, we want to identify students early. This spring, we'll be having our meetings with the middle school, talking about incoming eighth graders to becoming ninth graders. We want to maybe try to pre-identify those students who might be willing to enter the workforce, or looking to enter the workforce after high school. We want to provide opportunities for students to explore those options as well. Again, more workshops, more opportunities for our younger students this year. We primarily focused on our juniors and seniors, but we also want to make sure our ninth and 10th graders know that there are, there are those options, and we do support them in that. Actually, we had a student on a job shadow today, which is one of the things we've implemented this year, the job shadow, which hopefully leads to the school-to-career program. So I'm excited to see him tomorrow and find out how it went. He was very excited to go out, and the employer was very excited to have him. So again, proud of what we've done, excited to see what more we can do with that. And then the last piece, improve course attendance, responsibilities, and accountability. That also is on page nine, which relates to sort of some of our credit recovery programming. What we want to do is reestablish that accountability for being in course and in classes and not missing classes. As of April 11th, we had 209 students that had 10 or more absences from school. That's 24% of our students, which was up from the previous year. And additionally, we had 193 students who were dismissed from school five or more times. So those numbers are pretty high. I think that's, we're seeing that, I think, across the state. I think Desi has information across state in 19, 20, 21, and it's kind of a trend. But we want to get back to trying to reduce that. I think we've seen, coming out of the pandemic, that there were gaps in that, in remote learning and things like that, and the importance that is, connection with the teacher and your classmates and accessing the curriculum. And we want to emphasize that. And I think with having our department heads oversee credit recovery, we can do those things with them. And the school committee policy for a full-year course, after 10 absences in a full-year course, students would lose credit. They can earn grades but lose credit. So once they would reach the 11th day, that would be one hour of credit recovery that we would be able to do with department heads overseeing credit recovery program that we were talking about earlier. So this will help us, help us and help our students be more accountable, more responsible for their coursework, being in the classroom, as well as giving us the opportunity to help them with that credit recovery program. So.
For clarity, it's not a new policy or procedure. It's been in the handbook for quite some time. We just don't believe it's been adhered to consistently across the school. And really, that consistency is what's most important for our students because the standard's at that next level, and moms and dads and guardians will not know unless they're calling the dorm room, you know, every morning to make sure that they're gone, that they're there in class. So we're really more focused on your class attendance next year versus reporting to school. Reporting to school comes along with it. If you're there for, you know, and that's good wiggle room. You have up to 10 absences over a course of a full year for a full-year course before you lose credits or you receive an incomplete until those credit hours are made up. And for semester courses, starting with that sixth hour of absence, that's when that starts to accumulate. So we're just trying to work across the board as a staff and adhere to this consistently and communicate it upfront to students before the school year starts next year. And lastly, the goals haven't changed. I shared with you goals for '24 through '26. I think we're fairly on pace for students in terms of our early college program and AP credit courses. As it relates to just early college classes alone, I think there are 331 course requests for next year out of 432 eligible students. So that number has jumped significantly over the last couple of years. And so if you just break that down by percentage, it's a little above 75%. That is, if each kid took one college course. We do know that some are taking multiple. And by '26, if that's what your aspirations are, it's worth signing up for one. We'll be behind you, we'll be supportive. Take that challenge for yourself. And with Mr. Cody's leadership, again, that last bullet doesn't necessarily mean you have to go through our internship program or job shadow program or school-to-work, but we want to have a pulse on all of our students having some employment or work experience before leaving our care as seniors. Any questions from the board on our school improvement efforts and update this year?
Questions from committee.
Questions from committee. Amy?
Thank you. This all looks great. It's nice to be back in the saddle again. I had a question about tardiness. I know that it's part and parcel of this whole course attendance expectations procedures piece. I know that chronic tardiness is an issue. I know that it's disruptive to other students. And I wanted to know, and I'm sure I know the answer here, but I just wanted to know if that's going to be something that's stressed to the students, that being on time, traffic being what it is, we understand. But it's not traffic that's making these kids late. They can get up early for senior assassins. So I think they can make it to school.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think.
It could be traffic sometimes.
On our first meetings with every class, that's something that the three of us stress is the importance of being on time and being, it's part of being good to yourself, being on time, being prepared, being ready to learn. I know Ms. Goodwill and I, anytime we meet with students that deal with tardies, we talk about what, you know, we try to get to the root cause of it, where are we going? We have conversations with parents. It's something that we're continuing to look at. Ms. Goodwill and I, we talk every day. How can we do something better? How can we, you know, where can we improve on that? But it's definitely a point of emphasis for us.
Laura, anything before I go?
Yeah, I was going to say just, well, I'm going to add to that. Some days, the traffic direction is really great and some days, some people aren't there and some people are late. And that's not necessarily the student's fault. Amy, it could be the mother. No, I wanted to say that this, first of all, you do a great job directing traffic. So thank you. This is fantastic. I really, this is such a great presentation. I really appreciate showing kind of what you want to work on next year, what you acknowledge has been some things that are struggling and your plan to do them. Every time I had a question, you kind of answered it. So I just wanted to make sure I said that I'm just, I'm super impressed by this. And I thank you for all of that you're doing for our students. I mean, there's a lot going on right now in the high school world. And I just feel very confident in your leadership, the three of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Great compliments. I do have a few questions. No, Laura's great at that and I'm not as good with that. I get to the, I don't know, the technical aspects of things. That's my forte. Okay, so let's see, where to start? The first item I wanted to bring up was you have student improvement plan goal number four. And that's really centered around technology. Unless I missed it, I don't think you really touched on that too much. Could you say a little bit about the last one?
In the actual plan?
In the actual plan, yeah. Since we're voting to approve this plan tonight, I just thought, would like to hear a little bit about that, too.
Starting on page 11, I think?
Yeah, at the bottom of page 11.
So the technology department for the district is doing a 10-year audit and long-term plan of the technology. It's just underway this year. So next year's goal will probably be a little bit more specific based on the committee's finding. This is just to communicate to the school committee that it is an effort of focus. We feel like we have a solid base in terms of instructional technology and what we use with our platform of Schoology in particular. But what that's going to look like five years from now, I don't know if we have the answer to that. Power School, which is our other platform, recently bought Schoology. It doesn't necessarily, as you know, if you're parents of the high school, doesn't necessarily communicate well with one another right now. So that's why we're trying to steer everyone towards one versus the other. And then, once the final grades are posted, we're sending you back to Power School. But we feel like in time, as that, those two companies blend together more and there's an overlap there, the school partnerships will, and our resources will benefit as well. So that's, this is fresh off the horizon, Ms. Spiny. And I'm sure when Mr. Trainhand meets with you, if he hasn't yet, he's going to be talking about that technology plan, that impacts. He just surveyed us a few weeks ago about what are our perceived needs. So that's, we want to make sure that that infrastructure remains sustainable.
Okay, great. I think it's great having a long-term plan like that on the horizon. We've had a lot of questions about maintenance and terms of software agreements and things like that. And so I think having that plan, I think it's great to hear that. Okay, the credit recovery. Could you explain that a little bit more? Is that, are we talking about kids who are absent, who are not turning things in, who are trying to catch up? Or are we talking about kids who are failing classes and they need to get that credit back? Or both?
Anybody and everybody who's off the rails.
Yeah, okay.
So right now, we have a tiered intervention system, what you call the Academic Development Center 1 and Academic Development Center 2. And each has a varied level of interventions that we provide for students. Some are more general when we're talking about ADC 1, where it's catching up on work. They've missed time, like you said. Or they're struggling in a particular course and we need more one-on-one adult attention with the student. And then we get to ADC 2, where they need more time out of that classroom and we need to focus more on executive functioning skills with the students. Some of these students that we're servicing in those two areas are struggling across the disciplines. And we're asking one adult, and one of them is a tutor, academic tutor, that's providing specific discipline tutoring. So going from chemistry, you know, in one day and then going on to, you know, English, the following. We need more support, specific support from our content specialists. So while we do see, obviously, value in having that small group one-on-one attention for kids who, for whatever reason they may be, if they're behind in their work or if they, some students have lost time for a full semester. We do have a percentage of those kids that have lost significant time having the oversight of the department head in English. Right now, and we also, we do have that currently right now. Our, with our tool of ingenuity, Ms. Mealy oversees a lot of credit recovery work for kids. But she, too, even as an exceptional teacher in English, can only do so much with so many kids. It's better that the kids who are struggling in specific content areas have that leader and that discipline to oversee their work, to help them get back on track.
It's having that opportunity of that technical expert in that content area. And when we're talking at the high school level, that's high levels of content. And what an opportunity to have, it's like having incredibly specialized tutors almost, but they're overseeing it. And they understand that content in a way that can give kids a more targeted, specific instruction.
That's great.
And they can determine, rather than repeating a full course, nope, this student only needs these units. We've been able to assess their skills over the last two years, let's say. These are the areas that we really want to focus on. And a generalist wouldn't be able to pick that up.
Yeah. All right, thank you. You also mentioned that you, one of your goals was to try to get more underrepresented populations into some of the AP and college courses. And I was just wondering, how would you go about doing that? Is it just a matter of encouragement?
Yes.
What's, yeah.
Exactly. Recruiting, taking, always keeping a focus on our demographic and keeping the dialogue open with our teachers about the capability of students, what the aspirations are of our students. That's, we started that in eighth grade this year. It was the first time that we did it this year. And I don't know if we'll be able to extend to seventh grade, but we certainly know that we can handle assigning our high school staff to working with eighth graders on their interests and skills inventories and working with them to take a look at their four-year path and taking ownership of their own program of studies and what do they want to do after. If we know that in eighth grade, and we always say this to the parents, when we look at that program of studies, we want you to read it backwards. Not just take a look at your course selection sheet that your eighth-grade teachers have given you that have been handed down by our school counselors. We want you to read what you may want to take when you become a senior. Because it's not English anymore. It may be speech and debate that you're really into. What do you need to do in order to be eligible for that class then? Or it's not just biology. It's, ooh, forensics is really exciting for me as an upper. Like, what do I need to do? So we learn more about our students and their aspirations and really take a look at their demographics. We can build those connections and work with. And like we said, early colleges kind of kept, we don't have to over-market anymore. It does it itself with the kids. So that helps reach our underrepresented populations as well. If you recall last year with Worcester State, the summer courses, 40% of our enrollment needed to be from underrepresented populations. And it wasn't easy. I'll be honest with you. It's not that we don't believe those students are capable of it. It's, again, the interest, the opportunity availability for families and students to participate in them sometimes. But I have no concerns whatsoever that that effort won't stay there. That's how our school improves, our profile improves. That's, you know, again, a high percentage of kids do have aspirations to go on to college. And we want to make sure that every one of them has an experience at least in one course before they graduate. And I think we're going to be able to accomplish that.
I think, too, the points that we set about the different improvement areas that we each spoke about all lead us back to knowing those kids better. Whether it be how they learn and them understanding it, whether it be making connections with people in the building maybe they don't often have a chance to connect with. I'm thinking of a young, of a student who will be leaving us soon, she'll be graduating. And her just having conversations or getting to see her value and what her potential is. And you only get to do that when you start to make those connections in all different ways. So they're all, all of those bullet points are woven together to kind of be like a support and a lifting up and pulling us together to understand each other better and to, you know, achieve our potential.
And frankly, I'm obsessed with it. Like, I'm always frustrated with the Department of Ed for not getting on the districts for submitting their data because everything lags by at least a year. So I'm always looking at the GHS advanced course completion from one year to the next. So just looking at economically disadvantaged as one example. And wanting the teachers to see this, you know, to be proud of the work that they're doing with students and for students to feel proud of themselves. 10 students successfully completed advanced coursework in 2018 compared to last year of 44. You know, high needs, 12 in 2018 compared to 59 last year. So I could go down the line. It's just evidence that we are making sure that each of our groups are identified and we're communicating with them and hopefully inspiring them to take on these challenges, which, in sharing these data with them, like, your people can do this. You know what I mean? And we're finding success. It's not exactly where we want to be. We still have, you know, mountains to climb, but I think the effort is certainly there.
I had a follow-up question to your question. So last year, remember when you came and talked to us, you had a chart of how many students had taken AP courses and like had it comparatively depending on diversity and overall, like, students. I think you said something about 72% of our students were taking at least one AP course or taking some advanced placement courses. What's the number now? Because that was last year. Do you have any?
306, so 72% in 2021 successfully completed a course. This past year was 319, but 69%. So it dropped a couple of percentage points.
And you also, I don't have it in my notes. I wish I had. And I tried to look for your last presentation. But you also had some numbers regarding those, like, low socioeconomic status students or kids with disabilities or, what's the number now? I don't have it, like, what was that?
So that number that I just, I'm looking at that table. I just added another row at the bottom. As I said, economically disadvantaged. Last year was 29 raw number students at 51%, 44 this year. So the number was up. But it's a larger class, so sometimes the percentage drops a little bit. So it's 52%. It only went up one tick. But high needs last year was 43%. It's 45% this year. ELL was 16.7% last year. It's 29% this year. But that number, that jump isn't that significant because it was one kid last year.
I remember we talked about this last year. I said it was like one student. I'm like, but it's one student.
Easy to change the percentage.
But what we want to, again, what we want to present is, we're watching this all the time. And when you're paying attention to it, usually improvements are made.
So now you say you're constantly recruiting these students, but how are you recruiting them besides teacher, like noticing them?
So another piece, when I'm thinking of UDL, UDL is about equity and inclusion. A lot of what we're talking about is equity and inclusion, making it so that there's opportunities for all students to meet them where they're at and get them to a certain point. So there's sort of that underpinning that's happening that's not necessarily like a face-to-face piece, but that's one piece. How else will they be getting to know them? We're hoping that by some of these groupings where they get to chat, to hang out, talk about things, get kids involved. There was something in here, I remember seeing something about two involving, like, the L program and, and getting the staff that works with those kids. And it's, I think those are some of the things that we're talking about.
Counselors.
The counselors, yep.
So, when you're, when the cohort is as small as it is for some subgroups, you have a better sense of who they are and who to communicate with to encourage students to participate. And again, this is just data on those who successfully completed the course. So, we had a handful of students who started a course and then just didn't finish it over last summer or last semester, let's say. You know what I mean? And unfortunately, you know, it did trace back to certain subgroups, and we needed to do a better job of sticking with it. Don't give up. Communicate with us. Don't drop the course. If you're thinking about going on a family vacation or going somewhere for an extended period of time, let's talk about this before you make that, that decision. And what is that impact? Because again, if you come from a family where there are multiple generations of people who have attended college, they may have a better sense of, of the choices they make versus, some students may be the first person in their family to take a college course.
Oh, I, you're preaching to, I understand. I'm a first generation.
So, so the effort is, is at least multifold and communicating with a number of people involved to help kids stay with it.
And I had another question about, like, reaching out to the students. How else, I mean, you talked about having advisory groups, you talked about having, like, some, like, maybe touching into those clubs. How else do you think you might be? Like, what other ideas have you had about, like, reaching out to students? And are you utilizing, like, the counselors?
I think one-on-one conversation with counselors, for sure. It's definitely going to be required as well.
One of the things that I've start, started doing a little bit this year while continuing to just figure out what I'm doing all year is sitting, I, I've started something called Voices of Grafton. It's about lifting up student voice, and I've gotten a few kids that I've chatted with. I want that to become sort of a regular thing that I do. And it, I'm not yet exactly sure what form it's going to take. I'm going to have to see what works best with students. But what I have found is if I hang out in the commons during extended block on a certain day, certain kids will just come and we talk. And I, I want to hear what they have to say. So, that's kind of an informal way. But we've also, I know Jason and I had tried doing something with, like, a club advisory council. We're looking at different ways to get different pockets of kids. And if you look at the commons in the morning and then the corners around the commons and the bathroom and the corner over there, those are your groups. And ideally, and if we had them all on the same floor, ideally, what we want to try to do is get to know all those different groups. And so, how do we do it? One of the things I've started is to pull some kids in and say, hey, what do you think of this? Tell me what's working well for you here. What would you, if you could design your ideal school, and if it had, what would be in it? What would you do? What would we do? What would it look like? So, it's just getting their voices out there to elevate student voice. How that takes shape exactly, a couple of little things have been working, but that's something I'd like to see continue. And that's an informal way. It's not, like, written into a plan, but it is a piece of trying to, I want to hear them, I want to hear them. We want to hear what they have to say. Yep.
I personally rely, and we all have, our people that we reach out to, to making sure that kids, we're reaching kids and families. I'd have to say our English language learners teacher, and I've worked with a number over, you know, twenty-five years. She's the best that I've ever worked with. She's just, and again, she's educating kids that really cut across multiple demographics, right? So, to, to really lean on her and help us stay connected to families, not just the student, but the families to, to keeping them involved in our school and making them part of our culture as much as, you know, and helping them to understand we want to be a part of theirs. She's just phenomenal at it. So, that's another example.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think another important thing is when you're asking for the student voice and you're hearing them, is also showing them that you're hearing them. So, when they make suggestions or when they, you follow up with, hey, I talked to, and I've, I've just even noticed that with our school advisor or student advisory group or even walking with Jay in the hall, it's like following up with those kids and say, hey, I spoke with, and this is what I found out means, because when they feel like they're not heard, then they're like, why do I ever talk to adults? Because you asked for my opinion, I gave it to you. And obviously, you can't get them everything, but.
Right. It's that piece about feeling seen and feeling heard.
Yeah.
And when you feel seen and heard, you feel valued.
Yeah.
And when you feel seen, heard, and feel valued, you're more likely to come to school, to stay in school, maybe go to more classes than you've been going to, or not hide in the bathroom as long. So, it's like, it varies by kid. And that, it takes time. They have to trust us. We have to regain trust in a community where not there was anything, but our whole world was apart, and it's scary to come back together. So, we have to let them know it, it's safe to do that.
And I think that building those relationships with the faculty and staff, with the teachers, I think that, I loved what you had to say about the faculty and student groups and the other attempts, like, just sitting out in the commons and, and, yeah, I was, we were decorating for teacher appreciation the last couple of days, and I saw how many kids are out there, and I think it's a great opportunity. But I think, you know, a lot of us probably would not be where we are today without at least one person, at least, who made a connection with you, who, who saw something in you, who made, I, I had someone just make the tiniest suggestion to me one time that changed the course of my life, honestly.
Yes.
And it was just that little, that little hint that I had never thought of before. And, and it, and it turned, you know, and so I think those connections are so valuable and so important. And I agree with you that it helps kids get up and, and go to school and feel like they belong there and they have someone who cares about them, who's at that school, who's an adult who can help them. And when things are going wrong or when they're struggling, they have someone that not just, you know, making an appointment with their counselor. Maybe they get along with their counselor, maybe they don't know their counselor very well, maybe they feel, you know, sweetish about, but they have somebody that they could say, this is, like, I'm, I'm having a hard time, and, and they can make that connection for them. So, I'm really glad to hear that. Anything else, or we will move on? We have to vote to approve this tonight, so I'll entertain a motion in that regard. Anyone would like to make one?
Madam Chair, remove the school committee, accept the school improvement plan for Grafton High School for the year 2023 and 2024.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
We have to stay.
We will have to stay. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
One more thing. So, next we're going to talk about the handbook, right?
Minor changes, I, I think we covered a lot in the last couple of years with changes, but something always surfaces from one year to the next. And right off the bat, does everyone have a copy of this in your, in your package just to propose changes? Okay. So, the first thing is that we want to strike through is illness verified through written documentation by a physician every time someone is sick. We are just requesting the school committee to approve that change for us so that it's not ever mentioned again. If it becomes habitual, then that, that's something different, but I think we're asking a lot of families every time someone, a child is sick to contact the doctor's office. And the doctor's office doesn't necessarily want families calling every five minutes. So, that's the, we'll keep that silent. The next thing regards to death in the, in the family or a family emergency through written documentation. I happen to be looking at the handbook as I was watching one of my old favorite movies, Ferris Bueller's Day Off, a few weeks ago, and it was that exchange between the dean of students, what was his name? I can't believe I can't, Edward Rooney.
Edward Rooney.
And Cameron Frye about the deceased grandmother. And ironically, I was, we don't, that word gives me a little bit of concern because what kind of documentation are we looking for? So, just notification should suffice, email should suffice. And why we're even mentioning it and writing it's easier for our attendance clerks if they're getting this information in advance for record-keeping and logging. That's it.
So, what did you mean, so it says through written?
So, just death in the family emergency through written notification.
Notification?
So, it will be excused.
Notification, okay. That is documentation.
Instead of documentation, just one-word choice.
And then the first line, the illness, sorry, we're just jumping into questions, but, that, I just want to be on point here. So, the illness verified, so that's still grounds for an excused absence. Sorry, I'm not looking at, looking at both in tandem here, but I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
Yeah.
We forget that sometimes.
We just don't require written documentation.
One or two words really matter for some people. And if we can reduce the confrontations that happen over the phone or in person, I think we should make those efforts to do so. I certainly don't want to be asking for doctor's notes every, every single day.
Oh, I see.
So, after that, the last minor one as it relates to college interviews and visitations, we already made the change from three to five, but it wasn't changed in one of the sections. It remained at three. So, we just want it consistent through the entire document and keep it at five. There are a lot of families traveling, you know, from coast to coast now to take a look at schools. So, if they're doing it for all the right reasons, I don't want them penalized with excused absences.
Thank you for that.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So, it says five verified colleges. Are we removing the word verified there?
No.
Or leaving it?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just changing the number three.
They give you a note.
You get a receipt that you were there, evidence that you were there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, we just got one, and you handed it. Sorry to jump in. Get a note.
And also, as it relates to procedures for college visits, there's reference to, one of those five days is reserved for seniors to participate in the October SATs or PSATs, or juniors as well. So, they have a choice. If you've already taken the, the SATs or PSATs, you can go on a college visit. If you haven't, we're going to give you the time during school while we're there. That's another equity effort we're trying to make. A few years back, you're doing this on the weekends and you're going to find your own, own place to do that. And that really put some families at a disadvantage and students at a disadvantage because they couldn't get there. So, we've made the effort to do it during school hours. And the only change that we're making is we, I guess silly, last year we put the specific date in the handbook, and we just want to remove that, that number. Just, it's going, we know it's going to happen in October. As it relates to electronic devices in the original document, it spells out cell phones, MP3 players. Most people don't even know what an MP3 player is.
I know what it is.
Video games? I don't remember what it looks like. I think we can just say personal electronic devices and everyone knows what we're talking about. And that's it for our recommendation of changes for the handbook.
Questions for Laura?
Quick question. I think we can do a better job communicating policy changes because I know this came up. It was from a former school committee member, and I was like, you know we changed it, like, why are you, but it is in the handbook and we've seen it with the dress code, all that. So, I feel like that could be a goal for our committee, just to make sure we're doing better so people are aware when we're making changes. And other than that, yeah, I think folks, good.
Was there a reason that you called out just the October SAT versus March, May, June?
It is the one we designate.
Is that the only one that ever happens during the school week?
During the school, the school year, during school hours, yes.
During school, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to dedicate staff to proctor it. So, it's really an opportunity to get off campus, go do a visit. Our freshmen are going, class are going through seminars with the school counselors and other dedicated staff are proctoring the test. If we get more students, I know we, we talk about merit scholars in years past in this district and every district. The more students we, we have taking the PSATs as sophomores gives us, gives our students a better chance at earning those accolades.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes, yes.
Instead of saying one is reserved, can I propose one may be used for so that it's a little more clear that it's the student's decision and not the school dictating? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
Let me borrow your opinion.
I just, I happen to be looking at the handbook today and I was trying to pull it up just now so I could illustrate, but I think there might be one section that still refers to quarters versus semesters. So, I would just recommend changing that. It had to do with determining rank at the end of the, valedictorian and salutatorian. I think it said valedictorian is determined at the end of the third quarter.
Right.
Very small thing, but.
I think I wanted to change it, but Mr. Coney said, no, leave it.
He said, no, leave it.
I, I think what we did for practical purposes this year is to say, because it's our first time in the semester.
Yeah.
To keep things equal for students and, and actually try to, we couldn't get answers from some of the schools who have done the semester shift. And I think what we've landed on just recently is we're going to make that ruling after seven semesters. So, the, after the, the fall semester of their senior year is when we'll do those calculations for balance out.
Okay.
But we wanted to see how things carry through, even though it wasn't a hard number on our calendar, give, give those students an opportunity to see if there was any change there. So, it will be addressed. We didn't make that in our notes, but I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay. Great. Any other comments? This also requires a vote from the school committee, so.
So, can I ask a question about the expenses? So, there are certain programs in college that require you to do auditions in places. Would you be willing to work with the student in those cases? Because it might be more than five.
Yeah, so we deal with that. And as a parent of, of club soccer players, there's more and more games being played at eight o'clock in the morning on a Friday in Arizona, let's say. You know, and I think that's going to have to be a debate with school committee on what's excused and unexcused when, and it comes to non-educational decisions made by families to miss.
What if it's educational decision?
Are you talking about auditions to get a spot in a college?
A college, yeah.
Yeah. Almost like an interview.
Yeah.
What's that?
Almost like going on a college interview, right? That would be an excused absence, sure.
They're typically more than five.
Right. So, if you're auditioning for voice at Berkeley, you might have a couple of different auditions you need to attend.
So, with?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's a very common sensible thing to do. If we're taking kids out for school to career stuff and field trips over the course of the day, this is very, you know, typical. I think what we're going to have to be careful of, though, as it relates to the athletics, is there's all of these showcase tournaments, and there could be up to four of those a year, where kids are missing Friday and Monday for games, but parents are extending those, those trips for family vacations, and now those two days lost are now four and five. So, it's really trying to be upfront with our families this year. There's going to be some adjustments for next year that you need to be aware of. Not saying don't go on those soccer showcases or hockey showcases or whatever they may be, because for those kids, that may be their, you know, ticket to get into a, a, a more competitive school of their desire. So, we don't want to dissuade them from, from, from doing those things, but just be more aware of the amount of time that you're missing. They may not be excused, but that's to mean we don't support you going. Auditions are very different. Now, people are going to call me and saying those showcases are actually athletic auditions, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
All right. Any, Laura?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the student parent guardian handbook change document for the school year 2022 to 2023 as presented with Amy's suggested edits.
Should this be 2023, 24, though?
Oh, it should, yeah.
I know it's, it's, that's what is on the paper.
I amend my, yeah, 2023 to 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on these changes? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Talk about the rest of your reading. Especially you, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, thanks.
Have this back.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, as we're making the switch, so the school committee can switch their documents if they need to, is the superintendent evaluation. We'll just give everyone a minute to adjust. Thank you. Have a good night.
Both.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
All right. So, we had several items in our packet. Everyone has seen the self-evaluation, and we had the compilation of everyone else's We can, I can open this up if anyone wants to discuss any items on the compilation.
Madam Chair?
Amy.
I think you did an excellent job compiling everything you received. I have no comments except to say, once again, thank you to Dr. Cummings for all of his hard work. I think you'll notice that in most cases, we think you're exceeding expectations and performing in exemplary capacity. Yeah, that's, I'll stop there. Let someone else talk.
Any other comments? Dr. Cummings, did you have any questions?
I didn't. Just thank you, everybody, for all the feedback. I know it's gonna, I hope it's gonna help me improve in year thirteen. I want to be crystal clear, and I hope I've been clear consistently, that anything positive that was reflected is definitely not just me, I mean, Kristin, the entire staff. Anything that I managed to do right is really the result of a lot of work from a lot of people. Obviously, we'll have a chance to say goodbye to Kristin at an upcoming meeting. I have her out. She did kind of volunteer to go shopping for teacher and staff and nurse appreciation. I wasn't going.
Yeah, I'm so glad.
So, it's so great that she's gone. I miss her, but it's great. But obviously, she's my right hand and left hand and it would be, I'm worried to move into needs improvement and unsatisfactory next year without her. But she makes my life, or has made my life just so much better and easier. So, again, thank you, and I hope to improve next year.
You're always very good at giving credit where credit is due.
It is due.
We appreciate that, but.
So, thank you.
Credit is also due to you because of the work that you do.
I appreciate it.
Very much appreciate it. Any other comments?
I just, yeah, I just think it's worth mentioning. I mean, we do incredibly well with a lot, little. I happen to be one of the people that got to interview with Kristin's future employer, and we were talking about the differences between their, that new district and our district and what the load that our administrators and teachers all have. And I, I think it's reflected in this, but I just think it's important to mention to the public, we're still low in people, per people spending. We're still low on staff support. We see, you know, I, we joke about the crossing guards, but we have our two, two principals, like the principal or superintendent, you know. And some of that's like a, that's a great thing to see your superintendent doing that every day. But that's on top of like a thousand other things that gets done by all of our teams. So I think we're incredibly fortunate in Grafton. It's, doesn't ever seem to be superintendent appreciation day, so maybe we add that in today.
Been waiting for that. I complain a lot, and it doesn't seem to come.
Maybe we add that.
How is there not one?
I'm sure there is.
We could declare, we could.
We can make it a day, maybe.
I really don't want one. I'm joking, but I do bring that joke out quite a bit.
I'm thinking maybe we could have a band, the parade. Jay loves all that kind of thing.
Yes.
Actually, there is one.
What is it?
September 13.
All right. On the calendar.
Probably in the summer, where no people.
The summer. That's so mean.
But I just, and, and it is teacher appreciation week, and nurses. So just to make that appreciation in general, I think I feel very grateful for you, Jay.
Oh, thanks.
And for what, what you do. So thank you. It's not an easy life.
I did see you Jaywalking the other day.
You did what?
I saw you Jaywalking the other day.
Is that him just walking?
Yes.
That's great.
You got the joke.
I did.
I use that with Katie all the time, and she thinks I'm not funny at all.
Oh, you're funny.
I am.
All right. Unless, any other comments? We do.
Just again, thanks. And to build off of what Laura said, I just think not only do we do a lot with, not a lot, but just the outcomes for our students. I don't want to forget that. I mean, under your leadership and with the team you've assembled and that you lead.
No, thank you.
We do right by our students with a lot less than other districts. And so I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Tell my kids you gotta be a little tougher.
What?
You come out better. You gotta be a little tougher. You're not gonna, you're not coddled. Grafton, you gotta.
We make fighters here, is what you're saying.
Be a strong learner.
Spying on that.
Resilient, strong learner.
Yes.
We do.
All right. Thank you. This does, we have to vote to approve. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the evaluation compilation as well. Anyone would love to do so?
Amy.
I move the committee accept the evaluation of the superintendent for the 2022, 20, or sorry, yeah, 2022, 2023 academic year.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on this?
No, but I always feel, can I just say?
Yes.
I think it's so bizarre. I can't imagine if my evaluation was like public and, like for the public. You know, I, I just, that's why I'm not a superintendent.
And if it had to be approved.
Right?
Yep.
That's the only reason why I'm not a superintendent.
I have a question.
Yes.
Totally off, but it's related to the evaluation. So I know teachers are working on a different evaluation system. Are superintendents going to have a different evaluation system going forward?
It's changed, uh, yeah, it's changed a little too often. I actually liked the, a few of you were here during COVID. They simplified it. And it was, I think it was just a lot easier and better all around. They went to a more complex coming out of it. So the, yeah, it changed.
Changed.
I think that brings up an important point for the public that, you know, this is, this is a standardized system that everybody, every district uses in the state. We didn't just make it up.
No, no.
It is very complicated, and I agree with you. I enjoyed the COVID.
Yeah, they, they put it by standard as opposed to breaking it out as much.
I liked that.
I liked it.
Same.
Any further discussion? All right, see none, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, superintendent report. Do you have a report today?
Three quick things. Our sixth graders are up in Nature's Classroom. They sent me a few photos. Kids are, at all accounts that I've received, they're absolutely loving it. Easily the best weather we've had in however many years.
Yeah, because it's like, it's May, not like November.
December. Nice week in May. Like last week would have been, it's still okay. But anyhow, that when I have gone, it's always been snowy and cold. So that's going exceedingly well. HVAC project at GMS. We had our kickoff meeting with Trane yesterday. All the equipment is starting to arrive. It's a good thing. We've, they've basically rented out a, not a storage facility, but like a yard where they can put this giant equipment. So it's not, we can still have parking, all the stuff that you often don't see. So I think that's fantastic. They're gonna start just digging in the day after school gets out. So, and we're not using that school for anything this summer. It's all planned around that project. I'll let Maroska talk about the prom on Saturday. And I have one other thing. I just wanted to recognize and thank our technology department behind the scenes. MCAS has gone, it's super tech-heavy these days, and they've made it, they've just done such an outstanding job. We had a little bit of an issue with internet today, and they just worked around it. And they, they're doing that day in, day out. Also, behind the scenes, John Sinosk and the tech department, Neil Trahan for sure, worked closely with cable. If you had a chance to attend or see the town meeting last night. I think people take it for granted when the AV all works beautifully. I don't. I have more gray hairs from town meeting and feedback and anything that doesn't work. But they worked, they probably had four different testing sessions with cable access at the school. A lot of work goes into making all those mics and all those dynamics work, and it worked beautifully. So thank you to them, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Jay?
I just have one question about the Nature's Classroom. So I know both schools' sixth grades are there. Are they, do you know? I mean, I could ask one of the principals. Are they blended together or they, they are?
As far as I know, they are.
Okay.
Yeah. To what degree, I don't know if it's exactly.
I remember years ago, that was something we wanted. There were, there was the idea that Nature's Classroom would be towards the end of the year, that the kids would come together and bond and then move on to middle school.
And they didn't have side, when, back when we started in the old facility, that, we could, they didn't have enough actual physical space, but now they do. So I think they're very purposeful about doing it, but there's a lot of combination.
Great. New place, it's very nice. All right, any other questions for, okay. All right, student representative report. Roška, get ahead in her last report.
Yes.
Like Dr. Cummings mentioned, we had prom last Saturday. It was fun, in my opinion. I had, I enjoyed it. I want to thank our senior class advisors, Ms. Rossely and Ms. Gibbs. They put so much work into planning that. They organized almost everything to, down to the T, so really want to thank them. Also, the parent group, they really helped with setting up. And our chaperones, Ms. Conas, Ms. Bassett, Mr. Carney, Ms. Black. They all really helped in the end of the day to make it a really great day. So thank you to them. This is the last week of AP exams, so thank the Lord for that. It is, seniors' last day is May 26, but we are having our class trip to Six Flags that same day. So I like to consider May 25th our last day. A lot of senior events are coming up, like the NHS Senior Night, our graduation, graduation rehearsals, scholarship night, all that fun stuff. Our music and arts night is also coming up on Thursday, May 18. The choruses, bands, jazz bands will be performing, as well as any art students will have a chance to show art that they've worked on throughout the year. So if you want to stop by, it's at Grafton High School at 7:00 PM. We actually have a computer science honor society now. It's the first time that we've ever had it. We've opened a chapter, and they initiated, I think, 20 students, I want to say, which I think is a really great thing. We have positions that current seniors are in, and I think they've introduced the people who are being on the E-board for next year as well, which is really great. And yeah.
Great. And actually, we added a meeting to the calendar, so if you want to come back during that busy week.
Oh, I'd love to.
One more meeting, you're welcome to come. But we, we did plan on relieving you of that if you were with.
I also really just want to thank you all for giving me such a great experience. I honestly learned so much, and I really just enjoyed spending my Tuesday evenings with you all. You're a really fun group.
I am so writing that down. It's on camera.
How we're gonna recruit the next.
I am so putting that on my Facebook page.
Please do.
Lily.
Well, we very much enjoyed having you here. It was an honor to have you, serving as a student representative on the school committee. And I, I think we learned so much from you. It was great to have your input and loved your reports. Every meeting, very thorough and on point, and, and we were just honored to be working with you. And I just wanted to represent the school committee and present you with this, this gift as a token of our appreciation of your year of service, of your two years of service, excuse me, on the school committee.
Thank you so much.
Do you want a picture?
Should we do a picture?
Love a picture, please. With Jay?
The whole committee?
Yes.
Dr. Cummings has to be in it.
You want to take some pictures for us, huh? Christie, Christie look ready. Christie wants to do it. Show off the nice dress, Christie.
It's not a dress. And the shoes. Always the shoes.
We're getting up.
You got a good camera, Laura? You guys, you're good.
I was ready with the PR. And the quote, when the quote, when I get them.
I think you should write it up like a testimonial.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a picture too?
Yes.
Oh, all of us. I wasn't ready.
I want to be out of the picture.
Speak for me.
Thank you.
You're the only first one who's ever wanted a picture. How do I know?
Tyler.
I think you're in the pants out of. Thank you.
Taking a screenshot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maroska.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
And once we sit down, remind us all again where you're headed.
Yes, I am heading to Northeastern to study mechanical engineering. Fun stuff.
Wait to have another engineer in our midst. Very best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Make sure you have a very, very bright teacher.
We'll cheer extra loud for you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, we'll see you there.
We'll be in the front row, so you'll hear us.
Oh, I can't wait.
I might bring a sign.
Thank you so much.
Night, thank you.
I need a moment.
I hate it when they leave.
You're okay? Do we need to executive session?
Yeah, I need a moment. Can I take a recess? No, let's keep going.
All right, let's keep going. So next, we have a discussion on legal counsel.
So I guess, is that me?
Do you want, yeah. I can speak it too.
I think so, yeah. You, you kind of brought this up originally as a suggestion that we discussed.
We've got legal counsel. They've been doing a very good job. To the best of my knowledge, we, they have been. I don't have anything to compare it to. As a district, we haven't looked at any other possibilities, including rates, scope of services, anything, at least in 20 years. So as, in terms of private services, be it transportation, food service, before and after school care, we have to go out, we're required to go out to bid on a regular basis, typically every at least three years. The legal counsel, we don't, we are not mandated to go out to bid. I'm simply recommending that I think it's a good idea to get, and they all have these packages where they'll have their hourly rates and they'll have the scope of services. Usually a two or three-page packet. It just summarizes it. I've reached out to six area, area firms that I received very positive feedback on, have asked for those, basically RFPs is what they refer to them as, suggesting that we form, the school committee form a two-person subcommittee and simply look through what's proposed to make sure that what we currently have is in line with what exists out there in terms of scope and hourly rate. I think we're competitive, but a lot has changed in 20 years too.
Has it been the same firm or the same person?
Same firm, for sure.
Same firm.
In my, I know over the last, I want to say, I'm gonna guess 17 years, that we've had two people.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, which is great. This isn't based on a complaint. I think it's just basic due diligence. Take a look at, especially with next year going into negotiations, that's super counsel-heavy. It's just a recommendation.
With the goal. With the goal, I'm sorry, excuse me. Madam Chair.
I think, actually, Laura, have a hand at first. I'm gonna.
Oh, I just was gonna ask you if you could maybe just give a quick overview for people, because we haven't, it hasn't been a heavy year, and just talk about, like, the different things we use are not, don't go into.
No, I wouldn't.
You know, I'm not asking you to do that.
Sit back.
Three-hour tour.
At this point, we're, there's always going to be things that come up that it's just smart to reach out to check with legal counsel on something, interpretation of a law. If we had any kind of legal issue, a student, staff member, anybody that had maybe charges, anything that would involve the police and legal action, I'd be doing a disservice in my job just to say, oh, I think I remember that from 20 years ago when I took a course. Like, of course, I would always reach out. With every passing year where Kristin and I have been less dependent on that than the first year, I probably called every other day. So it's when, it takes something pretty significant for me to call and just try to get ahead of it. Ideally, we're nipping things in the bud, and I want to know early on, I can see this coming. One example with the dress code, that, that came up. I wanted to make sure the work that was being done here and a unique policy to us would actually stand up legally, and if not, like, we poke holes in it. And she did that and gave that information to the subcommittee. During negotiations, the legal counsel has a seat with school committee, subcommittee at the table. So it's much more involvement with legal counsel during negotiation years, and that's typically every three years. I think that, does that kind of cover it?
Yeah, that's an overview.
So I haven't, other than dress code, I don't think we have, I can't think of anything that I've gone to legal counsel for, for example, the last two months. Kristin's the only person that without my approval can reach out to legal counsel. We might have a small HR thing, and I say, that being, it's not an in-person meeting, it's not a Zoom call, it might not even be a phone call, just an email, just double checking on Family Medical Leave Act and some weird thing, and it will be simply an email back to Kristin. So to give you a sense in a normal year, it could be two months plus that, when things are going well, I don't have to reach out.
But there also are legal counsel as well. So if something comes to us, Liz, the chair could reach out to them or some things like that. So, and we have had a great relationship with our current.
Correct.
Firm for years. But I'm in agreement that I think it makes sense just to, to look and see, and maybe we say, nope, we like what we have. And that's cool, but I think it's.
And I did speak with our lawyer, just to provide that context that's just best practice. And I can't remember what she said, but I, she fully understood it and understood that just makes sense.
I'm glad to hear, that's what I was gonna ask the, the committee, is if this charge would be to replace or to just consider what, you know, and I think whether it's, you know, sticking with the same person, because there's, you know, there's value in that as well, having someone who knows your history and, and doesn't need to, to get up to speed on, on all of that. So, okay. Amy.
I have a question about timeline. Would it, would the goal be to have a decision that would be approved by the committee by July 1st? Or are we talking like September 1st?
It wouldn't have to be July 1st. My hope would be that by July 1st, the subcommittee could at least look at, and that's assuming that not all of the firms are even taking on new clients. We've already had one that said they're not. So we'll see. But if there are a few, I think it would help us, I don't anticipate a change, but if a change was made earlier, the better, on my end.
All right.
Did our current firm submit anything?
Yes.
Or they did? Oh, great. Okay.
They're the first to do it, and most of them have a pre, like a.
Yeah, it's a package.
This isn't, most do this on a regular basis. This isn't, most do this on a regular basis, and every year the annual, the hourly rate might change, but the basic scope doesn't.
But they responded positively.
Right away, first ones.
They didn't say, well, if you're looking, we don't want you.
Oh, no, 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 and that's why we had that in-person conversation.
I come from marketing, we get very offended if you go looking at other options.
Lawyers don't do that, they want the business.
No, then we scramble and you have to do it to work.
Lawyers aren't usually that sensitive, they're, they're fine. Okay, any other, okay, so I guess, so tonight we need to discuss whether or not we would like to form a subcommittee of two, or we, we could have more people, but if that's a good idea, if we want to move forward. If you say, no, not.
I don't think we can have more than two.
You, well, we can, we just need to format, we would format it differently.
It doesn't need a quorum.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, but you can do that.
I don't think we should.
I think it's, I think it's probably enough work for two, depending on the two.
Yeah, okay.
Clearly, having a lawyer being part of that subcommittee seems to make sense. But, I'm not volunteering you, I just think you.
I was going to volunteer you, so.
So I'm actually kind of interested in it, although at the same time, I feel like somebody who's worked more with our lawyer, you haven't, okay.
I have, but I, I am not really.
Not interested?
Yeah, I'm not really interested.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy if, if there are two people that really want to do it, and I think you would both be great.
I, I have worked with our current attorney, so I feel like I have a sense of who she is, and so, yeah, I'd be happy to do it. Okay, so we're on favor of having a two, forming a two-person committee, and then we can talk about schedules and, and meetings, and we talked to Jay about getting the information that he has, and we'll keep it nice and simple, and.
Yep.
Go from there, okay, good.
Great, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate that.
We'll do that. Alright, future agenda, schedule planning, yes, Laura?
I have, so this kind of came about in a roundabout way, I had met with Jennifer Cummings just outside of school committee things, and I was talking to her, and I was like, you're so great, when you're ready, you should come to school committee, you know, with your approval and everything, but I think it's such a cool thing, and she was like, oh, I'm still getting my seat, well, then she sent me an email, and she said, hey, I would love to come, and I said, oh, well, let me chat with the committee and the chair and Jay, but if we could get Jennifer Cummings either as soon as possible, or if we want to see if it makes sense for the beginning of the year, it's, she is such a great resource, and I'm hearing more and more people have used it, there were some comments made in the public that they didn't think people were aware of it, so this is another way to get awareness of her, but I've been super impressed with her, and I'd love to have her come, and she did, she did say, like, that's something she would want to do, because I wouldn't want to put somebody up here if they.
Right.
Were not comfortable, so, I don't know how you guys feel, but I think it'd be cool.
I think it's a great idea. Are we, am I correct that we are going to meet again in May?
Yeah.
The document just doesn't have anything yet, okay.
Fill it in.
So we need to move food service to that day? Because that was listed for tonight. And then, if, if, Jennifer? That'd be amazing, I'd love to hear about her work, and.
Although, if I may. No, I'm just wondering if it's, I feel like there's a little bit of checking out at the end of the year.
Not for the juniors, though?
Yeah, fair enough.
I think it might be nice, because it's the summer, not to be like, my kid's a junior, but like, my kid's a junior, but the, they are going to do a lot of work over the summer, so it might be nice to have her come and present, and then, but I know you're right, like, it does.
But for people tuning in, and I don't know, I feel like we have maybe more attention at the beginning of the year, everyone's kind of fresh, and do we start the year off with sort of highlighting this really important service, or both, I don't know.
If we can get her, I say we do it now, because we're trying to fill our schedule.
Fair.
We want her to come back, this fall's pretty busy, but I, I understand what you're saying, but we could, you know, promote her after, I don't know.
Share the video.
I don't even know if she can come, she may not be able to come.
It's also maybe putting it on people's radars, I mean, we have, you know, kids who are, you know, going into freshman year next year, and maybe it's good for to, if they see it, if they're not completely checked out, then they, you know, can see that the service is available, I mean, the parents can see and tell their kids, because maybe, there's some kids watching our meetings, I suppose, but, and at least it's on their radar, and then we can always, yeah.
Just bring her back.
Bring it back, yeah, I think that's a great idea. Are there any other, you know, thinking about end of the year, and occasionally we've had groups who have won awards, or gotten to nationals, and things like that, is there anyone we're, we're missing? Is there anyone we're overlooking who we should invite? I know I, I just randomly reached out to, to one student who had accomplished something to see if he'd be interested in coming, and he, he was not, so I didn't, I didn't forward that, I just talked to him individually, he didn't have interest in presenting himself.
Science fair winners, we had them last year.
He did have the science fair winners. And civics projects, eighth grade civics projects have come in the past, but I haven't seen a request.
I remember the letters, but I don't, I don't remember a presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Tarzak was here, and he brought kids in two years in a row.
Okay.
Important to get information about the civics curriculum out there, and I hear it all the time that we don't teach civics, well, we, we do.
Tenth grades also, there's other groups besides eighth grade doing civics.
True, true. Anyone else?
I mean, I always like kids coming in, so.
Yeah.
More the merrier.
That's our output.
It'd be nice to have a, a nice, kind of lighter, um, meeting, next time too, yeah.
You have in the past, or we have in the past, brought representatives from nature's classroom to come in and talk about the experience.
I think it's great, anytime you can get kids the experience of presenting to, to a group.
Oh, we're not scary, we're fun, just as Maroska said.
She had so much fun with us.
You should make a video.
It can be scary, I mean.
It is scary.
All the lights.
Yeah.
But it's good to get present, presenting.
Yep, I agree.
The more practice you, you have, the better.
The kids, though, we don't need like a 30-minute slideshow.
So then we have the June 6th meeting as well.
Alright.
And then I assume we're. After that, we're just gonna wait and see.
Take a break?
Take a break, wait and see.
Are we, we talk about that now, or we can talk about that next time?
I don't care.
I think we talk about it when we have our.
Yeah, we can talk about it next time after we rework, and.
Alright.
See what the summer's going to look like, okay, and we will have that on the May 23rd agenda. Well, we'll need to, so.
Yep, I haven't.
Can I ask, I was going to say, could I ask for the chair if, if Dr. Cummings has done the room reserve reservations already, like he did last time for next year?
The room reservations for?
Remember how you did that, you had it all?
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Okay, just a thought.
To reserve this room for our meetings? Oh, okay, it never occurred to me that we could get.
My most updated one.
Trumped on that.
Which I think they're just different, I had on the 23rd, the future agenda calendar, so typically, once the committee takes a look at that, and if the committee is okay with those dates, that's when I reach out to CNIID, because right now I'd be guessing.
Yeah, I think I mentioned that last, next, last week, that, yeah. I mean, we'll figure out how to manage that, but can throw something together and.
Yep, that's easy.
Talk about it next, next time.
We also don't know about, like, when this room is going to get, start getting torn apart, if it's all over the summer.
I haven't had an update on that in forever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, I'll check on that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, approval of minutes, I think we have two minutes to approve tonight, so I'll entertain motions for both of those individually, please.
And then, Chair?
Laura?
I vote to approve the minutes from April 25th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
I do not see a second set.
Please, I don't have a second one?
We have two warrants.
Okay, I thought I, maybe just because I reviewed two sets of minutes today, I had that in my head. Alright, so for the warrant, then, I will entertain a motion to approve the two warrants separately.
Madam Chair. I move, I move the committee approve, oh, the warrant numbers are different, warrant number 43, dated 4/27/2023, and the amount of $549,083.77 sets.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Laura, are you abstaining?
I'm sorry.
Just checking.
That's okay, can I just, can I just make a note, I forgot to raise my hand for the minutes, and I meant to, so I'm not abstaining.
Okay, alright.
I'm a yay on everything.
Okay, didn't see that.
Madam Chair, I move the committee approve warrant number 43R, dated April 27th, 2023, and the amount of $299.97.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you, Laura.
Sorry, I was having a sign come out.
That's not sarcastic, oh.
No, no, I don't feel bad, I don't need to be called out for not doing the right thing.
You're, you're fine.
It's your kryptonite.
Don't worry, you were not doing, no.
I was, I was talking to Jay.
Alright, well, now we know, you were chit-chatting, and you were distracted from your duties.
It was my fault, I was trying to figure out which policy to put up.
I don't know, I think it's up to the committee.
Alright, moving on to policy, so we have one policy, JICA, Student Dress Code, as you recall, we, we, the, the policy committee brought this before the, the school committee, once before, actually, is this the second time?
This will be our third time for Jay.
So we've brought it back twice to review it, which is perfectly fine, because we want to get this right. The policy committee took this back, and we had another meeting, and we discussed this a little bit more with all the feedback, took everything into consideration, and we'd also had some correspondence about the policy, so we read all of that, and were able to craft what we think is a policy that addresses concerns of the committee, concerns from our legal counsel, and provides a policy that gets to the, the aim that we were trying to address with it, that we discussed last time, Laura, do you have anything to?
I do, just a couple things, and this is the, still with all the changes up there, if you want, we can throw up the clean, or you have it, because I don't know which is easier.
Yeah, we have a separate.
We've had some questions about why we're not just going to go blanket MASC, because that is something we're trying to move to do, in this case, we wanted, this has a lot of MASCs, the character of that policy, but we wanted to make it specific for grafting, especially, theirs was much shorter, and we wanted to provide some more guidelines, just because we were changing it, and maybe in the future, we'll, we'll continue to evolve it and go right to MASC, but, so we really just tried to kind of, when somebody brought up what disruption meant, two weeks ago, we wanted to add, it was like disruption to the learning environment, which we thought was important, we didn't want to list out every single thing they couldn't wear, but we thought it was really important to make sure there was no hate speech, or really obscenities, and we, so we think this kind of meets everybody's concerns, and it vetted through legal counsel, it passed that, so.
Any questions or discussion?
What?
I love it.
I love this.
Can I get that in video too?
Yes.
If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair.
And we can, we'll prove this as.
Fine.
It's fine.
A final, yeah.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve policy JICA Student Dress Code as a final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much, Laura?
So Dr. Cummings, how will this be communicated? What, what can we do to help? What, how do we get this into the handbooks to make sure there's?
I'll need to give that a little more thought, and I don't want to just wing it and not.
Okay.
Be right.
Alright.
It won't be a shock to.
No.
Principal, you know, we've been talking about it for a while, so I, I think there's plenty of forewarning, I don't think it's going to change a lot of our practice overnight.
Yeah.
But let me think through the communication of that, and circle back probably tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, just let us know how we can help, I just want to make sure we're better, doing a better job on our end, communicating.
Got it, no, and I appreciate that.
You're right.
Not on you at all, you know?
Okay, great, member reports. Yara?
So CPAC has asked that we let, remind folks that the Everyday Hero Awards are taking place on Thursday at 6:30 PM via Zoom, if you want to be excited about the great work happening in our schools, Everyday Heroes is a great way to do that, they had 36 people nominated this year, three of them nominated by students, to actually nominate somebody that has made a difference in their life, so that was exciting, so visit their Facebook page for the link, and yeah, encourage people to tune in at least for a little bit of it.
Anything else?
I think one of our members also got nominated. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, that's not why I bring it up.
I know, that's why I brought it up.
Thank you, it isn't my, it hasn't traditionally been my favorite thing, as folks in the CPAC community know, I don't love, always love what it's called, because I don't think that providing our students with disabilities with the services they need to access curriculum is necessarily heroic, but I think that the focus has become much more on inclusion, and advocating for inclusion, and, and I definitely get behind that spirit, so, thanks.
Any else? Amy?
Happy to report that the capital budget passed last night at town meeting, including some nice things for the schools, which evade me right now, but I'd like to thank everybody who came out to town meeting and supported the passing of that. I also wanted to report out that the eighth grade civic students that I, that I taught a few weeks ago about municipal government had a great time, they love stickers, I was not allowed to give them candy, but I was allowed to give them stickers, they had a great time, they learned a lot, and they actually talked to me last night, which was unusual, I usually, they just, you know, they don't want to talk to grownups, but a couple of them did come up to me, a couple sat right in front of me, and, you know, asked questions, which was really fun, and I just wanted to thank all the parents who brought their kids out, yes, they did learn that town meeting can be boring, but it can also be very exciting, and I think it's good for them to see government in action, that it's not always people screaming at each other, like on TV, so, there we go.
Last night was a, it was a good meeting for them too, the tent, too.
They were happy about the playground, they were very concerned about the playground, most of them.
Yeah.
And they were concerned about the flag and seal motion, so some, most of them didn't make it to the end, they left, but a few of them did, and they were, it's really good discussions, and I just want to say about teaching for one day, I cannot imagine, growing up, I wanted to be a teacher, and I couldn't do it every day, I have so much respect and admiration for our teachers, they were so gracious to have me come in, they never tried to give me pointers, they always say I'm awesome, even when I'm not, and by the end of the day, I was ready for a good long nap, so kudos to all of our teachers, especially during Teacher Appreciation Week, we do, we see you and we appreciate you, and for one day, I was you, and it was hard, but I'll do it again.
Alright, thank you for doing that, Amy, I will make note that it is, we've said this a couple times, but it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you, thank you so much to all of our teachers, I hope you feel appreciated this week, I know that people have been in the schools this week and last week, some in elementary, in the elementary buildings, but, and GMS, you know, people were putting out food, and buying Keurig's, and trying to show appreciation for the teachers in the middle school and in the high school, and so I, I hope they feel it, because it's, it's there, and we very much appreciate everything that teachers, administrators, staff, that everybody does, custodians, everyone does, to educate our, our students, so, thank you, to everyone paying attention. One last item of business, and I, first, I want to thank very much Laura often for organizing what we're about to present here, because as I've said many times, I'm, I'm terrible at this, and she is gifted at picking out perfect celebratory gifts and acknowledgement gifts, so thank you Laura for doing this, but Graciela, in your last meeting, on behalf of the school committee, we just wanted to present you with these gifts, to acknowledge the years of service that you've had on the school committee, we very much appreciate and are going to miss your insight and the wisdom that you've brought to this committee, and.
Thank you.
Everything that, that you've added, you've opened my eyes to things, and made me think about things a little bit differently, and I really appreciate that, and.
I, thank you, I really appreciate that, because this was something that I thought I would never, ever in my life do, and when the opportunity came about, I thought long and hard, and sometimes thought I was doing the wrong thing, but it's actually helped me see the schools in a 100% different light, you know, I'm usually on the other side of the table, as a school, you know, member, as a school psychologist, and I don't see this part of how schools function, so it's been great to see it, how it all evolves, and all the, all the things that go along with being a school committee member, so, thank you for the opportunity you gave me back in February.
And then you got elected, though.
And well, thank you for stepping up to take advantage of that opportunity, I'll present you with the gifts, and then, if anyone else wants to say anything, I'll give them that opportunity too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, oh, I'm sorry, and we can get a picture after the meeting, maybe? Or we can do it now?
We can do it.
Do you have a reference after?
Okay.
After's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, no, you've been, you're always a member, it's a lifetime club.
So Elena did tell me on the way here, my, my daughter, she was like, well, maybe you can do it when I go to college. I was like, okay, thanks, Elena.
Welcome back.
A lot of people come back, yeah, no, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure.
Like I said, thank you for the opportunity back in last February, because it was, it was scary.
I'm very glad you stepped up, though.
Thank you.
That was a tough group, we had some good people that night.
Yeah, we did.
You did.
Well, I would also like to say thank you, I've really enjoyed getting to know you, and I hope that we'll still be friends, and your husband too, and I think you, you've brought some really interesting perspectives to the committee that we haven't seen before, and it opened my eyes to things that, you know, I, I wasn't worried about some of the issues that you tackle every day, until I met you, and we started working together.
Still a phone call away.
I know.
Lifetime club, I'm telling you.
I'm still.
Thank you again so much.
Thank you.
If you have, if you see something wrong with the policy or something, maybe just call us instead of going to the superintendent.
I, I have his phone number now, so.
But like, you want to have ours, you could be like, hey, can I just check, did you actually change this policy, before you make like a, you know, federal case out of it?
I hope he doesn't block me again, though, because he.
I did, I did, accidentally.
I did, I did, accidentally. It was pretty early.
I was like, why aren't you getting my text messages? Like, I had a question.
On the phone, I don't even know how to do it.
I'm shocked you know how to block people.
I don't.
No, you didn't.
That should be in the evaluation.
Evaluation, he blocked me. And we had to figure it out, like, why aren't you getting my text messages?
No, I didn't. Really did.
Oh, that's funny.
Well, I enjoyed going through the process with you in February, when, two Februaries ago, and then getting to know you and working with you, and then, yeah, I just, yeah, you've enriched the school committee and you've enriched my life, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to move on after that, the rest of the agenda just looks so boring. We can get through it, yeah, uh, so correspondence, uh, we did have a little bit of cor, minor correspondence, just basically fact-finding that I forwarded all the, to the committee, so nothing to, I don't think anything to discuss there. Um, I, we don't need executive session, unless anyone has any reason for calling tonight, no, okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. No discussion, right? All those in favor?